Good morning, friends. Welcome to God Encounter. So glad that you're joining us today. Today I have a special guest and I met Doug at church. Doug happens to be one of the worship leaders at God's Generals, God's Soldiers, with Pastor Sherby Long. There's some generals there too, just throwing that in there. So, um, yeah, so Doug Coop has been actively engaged in building the communities he lives in for over thirty years. Since Doug arrived in Clark County in 2015, he has embraced action, serving as a leader in his church, and weekly volunteering with homeless outreach. He believes that family, freedom, and safety are the cornerstones of a thriving community. Doug is now currently running for Clark County Council District One to address those needs of his community with real community-based solutions. So, welcome to the show today, Doug.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time. So I'm kind of excited. You know, I know Doug at church because he leads worship. But there's another side to Doug that I'm very excited about because if you've noticed lately, I've had a lot of few politicians on because it is the responsibility of the church to be involved, okay? We were not involved for way too long and look where we're at. So, if you're not registered to vote, I'm telling you right now, get registered and vote, okay? We, the people, need to regain our voice again and see God return to our communities, to our regions, and definitely the state and the United States. Amen?
Yes, amen. Yeah, this is funny that you say that because, you know, I got a statistic, basically through Victory Channel, and it was very interesting that fifteen million Christians did not vote in the 2020 election. That's a sad thing. So, you wonder why God's army, where they are asleep? You know, that's, that's not good, so.
No, no, it's not.
You know, when I first ran, and on another note, I ran for mayor of Vancouver last year. And it just, just hit me, God, just put it on my heart because nobody else was stepping up to the plate, you know? And I asked myself the question, basically it echoed from God, if not me, then who?
Come on.
I didn't see anybody else stepping up to say, hey, we need to make a difference.
Yes.
So, that's why I got involved.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So God put the burden on your heart, you're stepping up to the plate, this is good.
Yeah.
Yeah. So for those that don't know you, tell us a little bit about your background.
Okay, so my, my background, I actually grew up in Honolulu, Hawaii. So, my family, most of my family is there. Cousins, grandmother, uncles, cousins, you know, a lot of them have all passed away, but that's kind of my history. My mother was born there, had family going back even further that basically migrated to Hawaii way back before it became, well, it was a territory. So, an interesting thing, I think I was sharing this with you earlier about my family background. My grandfather was a middleweight champ of the Pacific. And so, uh, a little bit of crazy things going on. I mean, he was a very mean person. I mean, he would do, my uncles told me stories that were just like, really? I mean, a story, one story that comes to mind is he actually went into a Chinese restaurant there in Honolulu with his entourage. Okay, and he would pull things like this one story. He would, they would sit down, order food, and have a great big meal, and then pull out a cockroach and put it in the, in the food, and then raise it, yeah, I'm serious. And then raise a big stink and call him over and say, hey, get over here, look at this, hey, hey! And then, and then they would get the, the people, the restaurant, in the Chinese restaurant, they go, oh, sorry, no pay, no pay, no pay.
Oh, my word.
Yeah. Just shenanigans like that. It was a real character, so, to say the least.
Yeah, wow.
My, he actually died later on in life from a drunk driver hit him. Get in run driver. So, you know, and that happened in Oakland, California, because what happened was a lot of the civilians, after the Pearl Harbor attack, they tried to load all the civilians on ships and send them to the West Coast because they thought the Japanese were coming back to invade the island. After the whole Pearl Harbor thing.
Interesting.
Yeah, so my uncle, his dad, my mom, we ended up, you know, not myself, I wasn't born yet, but, you know, they ended up coming to the West Coast. And my uncle, who's a big impact on my life, he actually was saved at the age of nineteen because he got in trouble on the ship over from Hawaii to the West Coast by picking and beating up people and fighting because, you know, my grandfather, their father, was, you know, the middleweight champ of the Pacific, so they, they had all this training and they, my, my grandfather used to take the two, the two sons, and he would tie them to a tree and let them box each other all the time. Just fight, you know, that was just the, the mentality back then, it was just.
Wow, crazy.
So they just had that in them, they would just like, you know, anything didn't go their way, they'd fight, you know?
Well, here, here's what I'm getting out of that. So you're taking the fighting the right way.
Yeah, yeah.
You're taking the fight the right way, right?
Yeah.
Which is good. We, we need fighters on the right side and fighting the right way for things that we need, amen? And government and things. And in the spirit, you know, as a worship leader, you know, you gotta fight some battles sometimes.
You are. To be a worship leader, you naturally have to be a warrior spirit.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no two ways about it.
Yeah. I used to, I used to blame my German blood for that, but not anymore. It's like, no, got, got a little bit of warfare going on here, so yeah, to push through. So, anything more about your family background?
Well, you know, that's, that's enough to be said. My uncle, the one that came over on the ship, the fighter, you know, ended up, because he was fighting on the ship, got in real trouble, and soon as he got off the ship at the West Coast, they threw him in jail. So, and it was the remnant of the Azusa Street people there in California that actually came and visit him in jail, and he got saved there at nineteen.
Praise God.
Yeah. So, and he, he became on fire. He became an evangelist right out the gate.
Good, great.
Started traveling around with Pentecostal Holiness Church, and he was under, he did tent meetings with Oral Roberts and all that stuff. So he was a big influence in my life. Later on down the road, when he, he came back to Hawaii, when he settled back there after all his traveling evangelist thing, he was a, a big impact on my life as far as me coming to the Lord.
Yeah, wow, traveling with Oral Roberts, can you imagine? The things that he's not experienced.
Yeah. I have some old newspaper articles about him, you know, where he was actually up here on the West Coast, and he was doing revivals and traveling. And they thought he was lost in a big landslide and all this stuff, and I'd have to refresh my memory, but it was an interesting thing, and they thought he was lost. And come to find out, some family had kept him, you know, safe, and then finally he just reappeared. And, you know, still carried on doing revival meetings, so it was like, yeah.
Amazing.
Actually in the Oregon coast.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
All right, now you had a God encounter at some point in your life. Tell, tell us about your God encounter.
Well, my God encounter is basically nineteen seventy-six, when I came to the Lord, because it was, it was an overwhelming experience because, you know, growing up, living in Hawaii, you know, it's the old hang loose spirit, you know, and I did, I did everything you can imagine. You know, I did, I did the drugs, I did the, you know, I did, I did all that stuff, and I was just going the wrong way. So, you know, my uncle kept talking, he kept inviting me, come to church, you know, duh, 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 you know, and I thought, man, you know, I'm having too much fun, you know? You know, I would be that kid that would just go out to the, the beach instead of going to school, I mean, you, you'd have to experience it because, you know, even when I went to school as a young person, you'd go to school barefoot, you know? This is Hawaii.
Wow, that's crazy.
Yeah.
Were you a surfer?
I did surfing, yes, yes, I did that.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, but then when God finally decided to get a hold of my life that one night in a Pentecostal Holiness meeting, man, my life, I mean, I came running and crying to the altar, and God just, it was just such a wonderful God moment that, you know, the funny thing, and people don't realize this, is that, you know, you can kind of look at the Bible, and, and it seems like words on a page, but this was my experience, that after that conversion, I started reading the Bible and it was like alive. It was like, all of a sudden, wow, this, this really means something. It was not just words on a page anymore. It was just like, wow, what have I been missing? So, you know, it just kind of went from there, you know, in my walk with the Lord, and then, actually, when I was, before that, I was, the, the reason the music part comes in, in worship and stuff, is I actually left high school at seventeen and was with a top forties dance band playing an organ, a Hammond organ, okay?
Oh, wow.
So we were traveling, doing military clubs, and I spent about a year and nine months in Samoa. And so, I was the, the keyboardist. And then what happened is I had to come back from travels and finish in the summer of seventy-three summer school to get my GED, and then took off again. So, that was my, my beginning in, in music. And as you know, I played guitar also, so, but I just picked that up on my own. I, I never took any guitar lessons.
Wow, well, you play, you play keyboard beautifully, wow, I mean.
Yeah, I had, I had some lessons when I was little on an organ.
Okay.
You know, those kind where you hit, play the pedals and you do.
Yeah, yeah. My sister plays the organ.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
What I'm talking about. So I had a few lessons when I was younger doing that, and my, my mom had, had, you know, done that for me, and the problem was with the teacher. What would happen is, he would play the song, right?
Yeah.
And because I heard it, God gave me an ear, you know, to be able to pick up music, to, to hear it, and so I would, I would always cheat, yeah, hey, it had me, you know, try to read music and all that stuff, but once I heard it,
Right.
it was over. I didn't rely on the music anymore. So it was kind of like a crutch, you know, it was like.
I know, I, I had the same thing, so I could play by ear, okay? Because, and, you know, this is back in the day, we're gonna date ourselves here, of records. Okay? And I would listen to a song three times, and I could pick it out on the piano, okay?
Yeah.
You know, because generally, there's three to five chords in every song anyway, that are the main, right? Okay, the others are the minors that give it some fluff and whatever, but, um, yeah, no, I was the same way, and so because of it, and I took like, I think it was two months of piano, and then my teacher moved to California on me, and he had just taught me how to chord with my left hand, okay? So I wasn't, I got very, I'm very lazy with, I don't read the bass down. So I, I do my own thing with my left hand, but, uh, you know, and I can do the filler, you know, with my right and stuff, but anyway, it all works, but, you know, but yeah, I, I hear you. Because it is easy to get lazy, and you have to really push yourself to read notes and stuff when you've got that gift.
Yeah, it, it, it is hard. I mean, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's kind of like, if, you know, if you wanted to be a teacher or something like that, it would actually be a curse to you.
Yeah, well, no curses on any of us, but yeah, I hear you.
Theoretically speaking.
I hear you, yes, totally. So, um, so let's fast forward. So God moves upon your heart to get involved in politics, so you stated earlier.
I, I actually spent, I first moved to Las Vegas as a young man. So, I went there thinking I was going to do entertainment. My voice teacher in Hawaii, actually I auditioned for the Pan Pacific Metropolitan Opera Auditions at the age of nineteen. Yeah, uh, no, I'm sorry, twenty-one, forgive me, yeah, I'm dating myself here. And my teacher had, you know, a person there in connection in Las Vegas, and so they had kind of suggested, or, you know, told me, you should go to Las Vegas and get into show business. So that was the original tent back in nineteen seventy-nine. Now, this is three years after I got saved.
Oh.
So, anyway, changed all that. After I got there, I, I got a taste of a little bit of that, and, and then I just, you know, saw, it was not for me. I didn't want that in my life, I didn't want that kind of lifestyle. And so I ended up just working in Las Vegas at the MGM. And I had, I went to church there, was going to an Assembly of God church there in Las Vegas, had, you know, fellowship with other Christians and stuff, and actually, in nineteen eighty, I was part of the Billy Graham Crusade who came to Las Vegas, and I sang in the choir.
Oh, fine.
Yeah, and it, I mean, that, that was just a great experience, but what happened that November, I was involved in, if you look back and you can go look it up, the MGM Fire. And I was working at that time, this is where eighty-one people died. It was a horrific thing. There were two hotels that actually had fires during that time of the crusade. And the MGM was one of the hotels, and the Hilton at that time, were the two hotels that would not put the Billy Graham flyers in the rooms. And they both had major fires.
Wow.
Yeah, about, you talk about God encounters, you go, Lord, you're talking very loud here.
Yeah, no kidding.
So, I ended up going back to Hawaii in, in eighty-one because I literally got fired from my job.
Somebody else been through the fire?
Yeah. So I, I got into the printing, my uncle, you know, there in Hawaii had a printing plant, and so I started to learn printing for eight years. And then after eight years, there, I was actually an assistant general manager, grew up and all that stuff, and then my background is printing, and then I got into the digital sign industry. So from there, I went back to Las Vegas, got a, a job offer, and so I was working for a plant there. And then I moved from that industry into the digital realm, the sign industry. And so my total of twenty-nine years in Las Vegas before I came here.
Wow, okay.
So, the reason we moved up here, my, my wife's mother was living in the Hood River, and she was by herself, and she had breast cancer. And so I got permission from the, the job I was working for, the company, which was West Rock, and they allowed me to move up and work from home here, going back and forth to Las Vegas, you know, maybe once or twice a month to service my clients there. And so, wasn't too long from then that she did pass away. But we're still here, and so that happened in January of two thousand and fifteen. So we moved up here in January two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, so you're in Vancouver, Washington?
Yeah.
And.
More for the tax purposes, instead of the Oregon side, right? Income, right?
I don't know, I've kind of heard a little of both, but, you know, on that, uh, because I had, yeah, anyway, um, I, I'll go wherever God wants me.
Yeah. Well, that was the kind of the reason that we were pushed up here in the first place, so, you know, it was more to help with my mother-in-law.
Yeah. Which I, I'm in the same, you know, I'm kind of in the same boat as you, but my mother-in-law's still alive, but we're not caregiving anymore, but we sold our home of nineteen years and moved and, and left a place that we lived for thirty years in the area, right? Into an area that's not terrific, but in a tiny little house to care for her, and now her needs are a little more than we can do, so she's in adult foster care. But, um, so we're still here for now, because this is where God wants us, right?
Well, that's, you know, somehow he drives the car, so.
Then we let him, and that's the best place to be, definitely.
So why am I here?
Yeah, so now you are running, uh, the Lord started to move upon your heart last year, is this correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So you ran for mayor, didn't get it, but that's okay.
It's okay.
You got your foot in the race, you got a little taste, and now you are running for again.
County Council, yeah.
In Clark County. So any of you listening right now in Clark County, vote for Douglas, okay, because we need godly leadership, you guys. And God, I'm seeing this across the board, you know, and, you know, you're actually an answer to my prayers. Do you know that?
Thank you.
I have prayed, I have prayed for years, God, move upon people to start coming into positions politically where we can have godly leadership, okay? I prayed this for years, and I'm starting to see the fruits, and I know I'm not alone, I know a lot of you out there have as well.
Yeah.
So, um, we're starting to see the fruits of our labor, of our prayers, right, come into play now, you know? God's moved upon the hearts of people, so we need to support them, and, um, but tell me, so why, why should we vote for you, Doug? What do you want to do for Clark County?
Okay, so what I want to do for Clark County, uh, the things that I've found out is most people in office, they don't really care to communicate directly with the people. My passion is to directly communicate, they've lost that somehow, they just, they, they get in there, they have a position, and they just go with flows, they don't use common sense. They're just being driven by agendas, and it's sad to see because all they're doing in the long haul is hurting the community, hurting people, because they don't have any principles or values in their life.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a real problem. And what I'm running on, basically, if you encapsulate the, the three areas of family, freedom, and safety, well, there's, there's things underneath that, that, that we need to look at. Why do we have, and, and they keep taking more, this, this is the, the pisser, okay, sorry to use that, but it's true. They keep taking more money from the citizens, and you don't see anything change for it.
Yes.
Okay? They keep taking, my personal taxes, okay, property taxes. Here we are, we're sitting in the mid, midst of a recession, all this coming out of COVID pandemic, excuse me, but it's true.
Yeah.
And, and all the things that have been, that have come against the people, and they're still raising taxes, my property taxes went up over three thousand dollars this year. Yeah, tell me about it. I mean, for what?
This, this. Right, exactly.
The schools are failing, they charge more property tax against the schools, and yet the, the, the kids can't even do math, they can't even speak English correctly. I mean, I was looking at the statistics of what they're showing, I don't know if I have it, uh, close to me here, but it was, it was amazing, the, the thing I saw, let me see if I've, uh, got it, but, yeah, I'll, I'll pull it up. But what, what the, the ROI, the return on investment for the money in schools, what they're teaching the children?
Yes.
Policies?
Yes.
You know, I went, and I'm there with the, the library board about what they're doing with the drag queen story hour and all this stuff, and say, you know what, as a county counselor, I would have the means to pull your funding. They keep clamoring to build more libraries, and yet they allow this stuff to go on, and they say, oh, well, you know, it's just the friends of the library, it's not really us. I say, mm-mm, you can change policy anytime you want to when money talks. That's the sad part. So, family, freedom, and safety, I mean, we're talking about the safety of people, did you know that in Clark County, right now, we have the highest car theft and carjacking rate?
You know, I've been hearing a little bit about that on the news.
Yes, and especially in District One, which is just over the river here, which is downtown Vancouver, from the two oh five, all the way down to the waterfront and, and further north up to the five hundred. That is the district I am running in, and the crime is starting to get out of control. They, I'm for the police, there's a good brother of mine, Ray Reynolds, who's running for Clark County Sheriff, the current sheriff is stepping down. And he and I pretty much think alike, because we want to be able to enforce the laws that are on the books. You know what they did from Olympia? They came down and they started last year, July, putting handcuffs on, on the police officers, okay? They couldn't chase down a suspect. I'm sure you have it on your side too. Tie their hands to do anything, so they, they couldn't go and arrest somebody unless they physically saw them do it.
What's with the shoplifting thing too?
Yes, people running in and shoplifting. My wife experienced the same thing. She went to Bed Bath and Beyond, and she actually was there when somebody came in and filled up a whole shopping cart full of all kinds of high-end items, and just went right out the door.
It's ridiculous.
And they were told, the employees were told, they can't do anything about it.
I hear that, that is ridiculous.
It is ridiculous. Well, I mean, who's gonna be paying for that in the long run?
Exactly, exactly.
And the, and the homelessness?
Yeah.
We're looking at government regulations, high taxes, the traffic, you know, they're playing games with, everybody knows that we need another bridge, okay? Everybody knows that from the Oregon side, but they're, they're trying to come in with light rail projects, so they want to just not build a third bridge, which we need for the, for the traffic, and we actually need four bridges. We need the IFI, the two oh five, you need one down in Waschugle-Camus, going across to Troutdale, you need one further up that would get over. There's a, there's, there's a organization called Third Bridge Now. If your listeners would like to go, look that up, it is the most wonderful proposals, and it's got everything laid out to where that third bridge can be. And, and they've done their homework for the last twenty years. And they, these people in government will not pay attention. They want, they want to have, they want to reconstruct the existing IFI bridge, which will be a nightmare, will not take care of any more traffic flow because they want to put in Tri-Met, the, the rail systems, okay? This is their, this is their, their pet ponies, this is their political pet ponies.
Yes, well, according to Mark Thillman, the reason why they're doing this stuff to the streets and stuff and making it harder for cars is they're trying to discourage cars on the road.
They want to get people out of their cars and.
Yes.
Yeah, and you know what cars represent? Freedom.
That's right.
They don't want people to have their.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Because imagine, imagine a, uh, there's a lot of people that go across from Vancouver and they go into, you know, Portland or further on, Beaverton, Nike, Intel, what have you, there's, there's. You know, Portland or further on, Beaverton, Nike, Intel, what have you, there's, there's all kinds of. Uh, businesses over there, too, that people are traveling back and forth, but let's say that you're a mother or a father or family, you know. Could you imagine you have to get on, you're, you're, you're pushed and, 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 and the toll thing is. The Clark County councillors do not want the toll thing, okay?
Good, cause I don't want it either.
But Oregon wants to push it, okay?
Really? I don't want it.
Yeah, nobody wants it. The reason why they want to get you out of your cars, to take away your freedom and make you ride this mass transit. I mean, you could go be, have a destination that you can get there by car in fifteen minutes, it'll take you two hours on transit to get. Yes, and not only that, what would, what, what will happen is. With, with the tolls and everything, they, they are saying that, that that will cut down on the flow, the amount of traffic going over. Well, I mean, if people need to get to work, who wants to get on a transit line? Let's say you have, you're a person who works and has, you know, meetings. You need to do this, of course, those people need to have their cars, but most families, most people, after they get off work, they do errands, they do this. They do things for their kids, they go grocery shopping, what have you. Who wants to get on a transit line and try to go pick up the kids in daycare, uh, you know? It just doesn't work, I'm sorry.
No, it doesn't, that's crazy.
I, i- i- as far as running for council, I do support the third bridge, okay? It's the most viable option and, and uh, most of the councillor members there are with that option, okay? Did you know when the, in, in uh, nineteen seventeen, when the I five bridge was first built? There was no other outside influence, it was done bipartisan by Multnomah County councillors and Clark County councillors. That was it, nobody else involved. Yes, amazing, when, when you start getting environmentalists and everybody involved. Things just drag on, they've been talking about this for ten years or more, more, twenty years. We need another bridge, we need to, you know, oh, this bridge is not earthquake proof and, uh, you know, all this stuff. So all the stuff gets in there. And, you know, now, now the problem is, it has to have. Equity. The bridge, you know, those, those little key words that they use. Equality, equity. You know? Yeah, yeah, it has to be, you know, so homelessness is, is a big thing for me, because I do work with the homeless and I see them. Every week.
Right, right.
And there's uh, some statistics, uh, the ARPA Grant Fund here in Clark County. Which has, they've been given federal funds, and I was just looking at this. And they got ninety-five million dollars, okay? This is since twenty twenty, since the pandemic. And of that, they have committed. For all these things like community services, they even put in for prosecuting eternity, attorney, auditor's office, public health. Information technology, Superior Court, Indigent Defense, District Court, Community Development and Facilities. Well, out of all that, they've spent only five point three. This is as of October last year, what are they doing with the money? Community development. They've spent zero, okay? Indigent defense, they've spent zero, but they did spend one point five million on information technology, that means. Go get a jab, go get a shot, do this, wear a mask, you know, that, that's all they did, they really did not help the homeless. So there's all these things.
Right, so integrity.
Yeah, integrity. What are you doing? And, and also there's projected, just supposed to get another fifty million in rent assistance, what are they gonna do with that?
Well, and I had heard, I had heard, I think Mark Thelman said that six hundred dollars were given to all these people that were homeless. And he goes, what do you think those people did with that money?
Yeah, drugs.
Alcohol, drugs, whatever, it certainly didn't go on living expenses. You know, I mean, wake up, oh my goodness, anyway, yeah.
Yeah, Lord, help us, the, the, the taxation. Luring taxes or, or making sure that these taxes don't keep going up is one of the priorities with me is being a councillor. And I, I, I want to put a proposition on the ballot and s- uh, just strongly oppose any more tax hikes. They need to be working within their means, I don't know what they're doing as a county, but you know, that stuff has to stop. I see these. Propositions come up, they keep pushing it for schools, for libraries, and yet people are struggling. People are struggling, where's the money going? You know, I, I want to be there to find out how we can make changes, okay? Now here's a good solution, because my brother, uh, Ray Reynolds, who is running for Sheriff, wonderful Christian brother also. And he's running for Clark County Sheriff, so I'm just gonna pitch him out there, too, but. Agree on what's called a net program now. I know Portland is different, but Clark County doesn't want to become Portland, okay, or Seattle. That's my main thrust and focus, because we are, the, the county council is the last line of defense. Against any ridiculous edicts that come from Olympia. Anything else that's going in our, our county, what they say, we can push back. Okay, so one of the things with the, the homeless thing, we, we discussed about a net program, a net program. Basically is this, and nobody's really thought about, but Ray Reynolds and I discussed this, and this is. A lot of his brainchild as, he's a Vancouver PD officer. But, and so he runs into this stuff all the time, so he is running for sheriff, but a net program basically puts. Faith leaders, um, uh, institutions like Teen Challenge, the Casper, is, you know. All these places, medical facilities, nurses, business, business for jobs, business for shelter. All these leaders in these communities have a chance to help each person. Individually with a net program where they're all tied in by agreement. And where some of these funds can go to help facilitate that, is that with a net program, you get one phone number, okay? So if a police officer comes up to you and you're homeless. They say to you, look, we've got a net program, you call this, we call this one number. And whatever your need is, you need rehab, you need to get off the drugs, you know, whatever it is, you need a place to stay. You need, you know, to get your identity back. All these things would be a one phone number, like a tree, that has all this connected. Whatever this person's need is, we're able to funnel all that. Whatever their, their particular need is at that time, to take care of them and get them off of the street, one at a time now. Then the next thing is, okay, you have a choice. Now, we're gonna get you the help that you need, and we have the resources to do it. If you don't want to, you have two choices. You can either go to jail, or you can go to Portland, I don't know which one is worse.
I don't like those two choices. We have enough of that here.
I know. Now, you, yeah, but brother. Run for office and take care of that on your side of the river, okay? I can only do much on this side.
Well, you can influence this side, too. Um, I want to do a shout out really quick, we've got Mike Jones watching, and he's been very, uh, he's been making a lot of comments here. Now, Mike, are you in Portland or Vancouver? Let me know. Bryson is watching, hi Bryson, uh, my son-in-law James was on, I don't know if he still is or not. Uh, Shannon was watching, Ron Watkins, Monica, hello, all of you, and Joy was on. Um, so, uh, and there's more that I'm sure I can't see, because I can't always see. Uh, Mike, Mike made a comment at one point, and he said, good people with guns can curb the violence. And I'll tell you, brother, my, my husband would agree with you on that one.
Well, that's not gonna be taken away, they're not going to get that out of the American citizens. That's why they're having such a hard time with their plans.
It's ridiculous, and this is what my husband says, they keep putting all these regulations, the good people are doing that. It's the people that are getting the guns and using them the wrong way that aren't applying any of those, come on, it's like they just keep putting all this on the good people. It's ridiculous.
It's the same story, it's been going on for years and years and years, always try, let's blame the inanimate object, the gun. Nobody has to take personal responsibility.
Right, right.
That gun. Just like you see what's going on in California, the, you know, prosecutors. People, they just don't want to make people accountable for the crimes that they do. That's why we're in the mess, and cannot allow that anymore, we need good people in government to say enough is enough. We're done, okay?
I agree, totally.
So government regulations, I looked at, uh, one was last year, and this, this blew my mind. For just regulations and permits, okay, a two thousand square foot house. You know, just to get off the ground, the permits were forty-five thousand dollars. Yes, yes, absolutely, forty, and that didn't include the environmental. Stuff that's gonna hit you on top of that. Now you wonder why housing is so expensive?
Oh my.
Forty-five thousand dollars for a two thousand square foot house, just for the permit alone, the permitting, to get off the ground.
Is this Clark County only, or is this across the board?
This was, I, I looked, this was in Oregon. And they're doing the same thing here, okay? Yeah, I've got a, I've got a picture of it on my phone, and somebody sent it to me and said, look, here's the permit, he's got the tube, the building plans. And here was the permit and the cost.
That's insanity. Well, let, let alone that the lumber's, cost of lumber has gone up and.
Gone through the roof, so what, what, how are you gonna help the homeless people then? You expect them to be able to get into a home? You can't.
No, 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 well, look at our kids, look at our kids.
Yeah, absolutely.
My goodness, you know, and it started years ago, you know, my husband and I both worked. Because we knew to have things, we had to both work, you can't, the days of a single parent, uh, doing all, you can't, you can't do it. It's just, it's, you can't do it.
If you go to the website taxes.org, you'll find out, here in Clark County, I don't know what it is on the Oregon side, but we have the highest. Medium tax rate, property tax rate in the whole country. Hello? Why?
Exactly.
Why? What, what are we giving?
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, Oregon's beautiful and Washington's beautiful, okay, you know, we, we have beautiful country, all right? We, we've got oceans, we've got mountains, we, we got beautiful country. But I'll tell you, people started leaving in droves in twenty twenty and twenty-one. People were leaving in droves because of the insanity happening in our streets. The lack of, you know, yes, as you said, basically, the risks of the, the police officers were tied down, you know, you, you know, and. And look at the small businesses.
Yes, absolutely.
It's horrible.
With regulations and, 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 and the lack of safety for the businesses. So I strongly support law enforcement, right up front, I mean, I work with law enforcement. And, and, and what, I want to back the, uh, the volunteer deputies program, that used to have that here in Clark County. With the Sheriff's Department, they used to have a deputies program, they are the most unstaffed. The, the Clark County Sheriff's Department is the most understaffed department in the state. So. Why? Yeah, so you talk about crime and, and what needs to be done, so. What happens with this, this program, and I hope it gets re-instituted, is that these are volunteer deputies that go out. They get the uniform and they get the whole nine yards, but they go out with other officers, other deputies, and they get trained, and then they can. Basically come on board, become more sheriff's deputies. And, you know, it was a great program, they have, you know, they, they stopped it, but, you know, this creates more. Training and safety for the incoming officers, they always talk about, oh, you know, the bad police, defend the police. Yeah, look what you've got, look what you've got now. We need, you know, we talk about, in God's kingdom, God sets up a hedge of protection. You know, for those who belong to him, well, I want to set up a hedge of protection for Clark County.
That's good.
The same thing, because the people deserve it, and I want to be able to reach out. And I don't think, you know, people really do this much, but I want to be a representative of the people, and to do that, I want to have every. Every voter, every constituent have access via email or what have you, that I can send out communications. You know, other politicians don't really do this much, but I want to be able to send out communications and get feedback and say. So that when I make a decision, I can say, you know what, here's thirty-five thousand emails from the constituents I represent. And this is, the majority of them are saying, do this. Not what Doug thinks.
That's good.
But this is what my constituents, the people that I work, keyword, I work for. Which, a lot of these people just think, uh, you do what I tell you.
Right, right, right.
I, I know better, I know better than all of you, but that's not what you were elected for. Ronald Reagan made a, a famous statement, and uh, he said. Government should walk by our side, not on our backs. Pretty smart.
I like that statement.
Yeah, government should be walking by our side to accomplish the things that we need, not walking on our backs.
Amen, amen, things got very turned around, uh, you know, very turned around here. And uh, so I'm believing for change, and I, I thank God for people like you stepping up and saying, hey, I want to be the change. Amen, you know, so.
I mean, we have to protect our, our families, we have to protect our freedom. That is God-given freedom.
Yes, amen.
We have to protect our freedoms, and, and part of that, like you said, Second Amendment. Uh, all those things, you know, you. When we talk about transportation and the third bridge, that's about freedom, too, because you don't have freedom when you're in a. Railcar, road mass transit going back and forth, and, and look what's happened lately in the country. To point this out, you know, we're all, all, the, the subways and the mass transit systems, they are such targets for. And terrorism. So now you want to build more on a, on a bridge.
You know what? No, yes, you know what, my sister, when they first bought their house, there was no max line behind there, okay? Now, there is a max line, and, and uh, it's been for years now, but anyway, you talk about crime. Shootings, muggings, all of this stuff happening along that max line, okay, and now, yeah, they want to put, no! No, why not, and not, another thing, I would love to see all these, um. Topless bars and these places shut down, that, that's another thing that it's, it's a proven, there's a percentage on this. That the crime in, in, around these areas. That are open, well, it's very demonically fed and led, okay, I mean, let's.
And that's the truth, you can say the truth.
That's the truth, there's, I mean, there's, you know, I've wanted honestly to prayer walk around, and I've heard. Um, of people doing that, and those places shut down, and, you know, but I mean, there's shootings all the time, I mean, I'm not. It's just, it's not very far from where I live, okay, I'm talking blocks, all the time, shootings, the gangs. It's just, it's all ramped up, um, but, you know, we need to see change, and then, so first of all. It takes us registering to vote, so being a registered voter. It takes us listening to God as to who to vote for, and it takes, and God has already started moving upon hearts of people. For godly leadership, okay, so Doug is one of those, you know, Mark Thelman in Oregon, and then Vance Day. You know, Oregon, um, judge, well, that's for all of Oregon, but yeah, I mean, we need to see, we've got to do our part. And we need to support those that are trying to do their part, right, and, you know, another thing. Came to my mind as you were talking, excuse me, but, don't you think you kind of have to have a pastor's heart? You're gonna hear a lot of stuff, you're gonna hear a lot of stuff.
Yeah, yeah. You, you kind of have to do, but, you know. You you kinda have to do, but, you know, I mean, in the sense of the word. I'm more of a warrior because of the the worship, you know, thing.
Right.
I've been doing that for over thirty years.
Right.
A worship leader, I was a worship leader in uh, assembly churches, I was in a worship leader in Calgary chapels. Uh, so I've I've done a lot of that between Hawaii and Las Vegas for many years.
Right.
Uh, in the meantime, having my job, so I was, you know, doing that.
Yeah.
Um, pastor, I don't know, because you really have to have a lot of patience.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't know that warriors have a lot of patience.
But, God's refining you, because you're gonna have a lot of people coming to you, and it's gonna take a great deal of patience.
That's why I have on, that's why I have on the back of my card, okay?
Yes.
To remind me, this is, this is like my campaign card, okay, so you got, you got the front.
All right.
On the back, there's a scripture.
Okay.
John thirteen thirty four.
Okay.
Okay, and probably it's upside down, so you.
No, no, it was perfect, it was perfect.
I'm giving you a new commandment, that you love one another, just as I have loved you.
Yeah.
That you also love one another.
Yes.
That's going to be the hardest thing today.
Yeah.
For us to just say, you know what, I know you make mistakes, I know, you know, none of us are perfect. But you know what, I'm gonna love you anyway, and I just wanna show you what's right, what's good, what's just, what's truth in love.
Yes.
I'm not going to backbite you, I'm not going to degrade you, I just wanna say. Jesus loves you and there is hope for everyone.
Yes.
Change, to see the difference that they can make in their own lives personally.
Yeah.
As a destiny, uh, that's so important, they don't have to stay the same, they don't have to. Live with the insanity that's going around in our world right now.
Right.
We can make a difference if we point to the light.
Yes.
Light, so that they will see light.
Yes, and I encourage you guys, listen, these people that have, you gotta be brave. You gotta be brave to wanna step into a political office, I'm serious, and so. I encourage you to pray for Doug, I encourage you to pray for all of those leaders that you know God is calling to the forefront, okay? Pray for the others too, that they would hear God's voice, and if they're not, uh. In alignment with the kingdom of heaven, that they would come into alignment there, but we we have to pray, there's such an onslaught, okay? From the enemy, these people take hits for us, standing up for the right, for righteousness, okay, in government. So I I just implore you to pray for Doug, support him, if you're in Clark County, go and vote for Doug. Okay, for this particular office, Clark County Council, District One.
Yeah, thank you. But also, most importantly too, it takes money, so I encourage you, please. Go to dougcoop dot com.
Thank you, so that's your website, dougcoop dot com.
You can send in a donation from there, I I will welcome it, please, it takes money to get signage up. To get the word out.
Yes.
It does, unfortunately, but that's the kind of world that we live in, I hate asking for finance and money.
I hear you.
Kinda goes, you know.
I hear you, yeah.
A bit a little about it, but it's a hard truth that we have to deal with, because other people do it, they have to do it.
Yes, yeah.
So it does take money.
Yeah.
Does take money.
So check him out, dougcoop dot com, you can learn more about him, and um. Why don't you close us in prayer, cause we've run out of time, but close us in a quick prayer here and.
All right, yeah, Father, I just thank you for this opportunity today. To be able to share and to speak and let a voice be heard over this platform that Cheryl has provided. And allowing me to come on, I thank you for her life, I pray that you would bless her and keep her, Lord, make your face to shine upon her. And give her all your complete shalom, Father, I thank you for this opportunity, Father. We know and we declare that righteousness and justice are the foundations of your throne, oh God. And so as your people, Lord, we align ourselves with you to say that rush, uh, righteousness and justice. Will prevail if we stand in the gap and stand and declare your truth. Which is the only truth there is, that there is only a man and a woman, a boy, a girl, there are only two genders, and we've. We come against that lie also, Father, as we're, as we're reaching out right now, as I'm praying, Father, that. People's heart would be aligned, that they would know the hope of your calling, what the riches and glory of your inheritance is in us saints.
Yes.
That we might be filled with your fullness, Father, that we would be the people standing and being the warriors. And be able to take back the things that have been stolen from us.
Mm hmm, yes.
Yes, Father, that's what we ask right now, that you would give us the strength, that you would give other people. The light that they need to see, that you would wake them up, not woke them, but wake them up. Lord, that they would see that what's going on is not right, and it all it is, it leads to. What the enemy desires, which is to steal, kill and destroy, and we love our country, Father, we love our cities. We love our state of Oregon, we love our state of Washington, and we want to see good things, Father. For our communities, for our state and for our country. So Father, I ask in Jesus's name that you would allow your voices, your people. To ring out strong, to take their positions on the wall, as with Nehemiah with a sword in one hand and rebuilding the wall. In the other hand. Father, that we would stand strong to help people come to know the one who died for them. The stone that the builders rejected, his name is your son, Jesus.
Yes.
And we wanna give him and all the praise and all the glory. In that wonderful, precious name, Jesus.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you for being a guest today, and um. Friends, we've ran out of time, but I love you all, stay blessed, and stay tuned to the next God Encounters. And vote, 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 okay? All right, bless you, Doug, thank you so much.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.